The time now is six oh eight. Good evening and welcome everyone to February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five Disability Issue Advisory Board Meeting. I am Stephanie Black Blackwell. I am your advisory board chair. Thank you you all for joining us today. For those who are unable to observe, the meeting is being recorded and can be accessed through the PG CPS YouTube channel for later viewing. Ms. Johnson, can you do roll call, please?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. Sylvia Maya. Stephanie Blackwell.
Present.
Trinell Bowman.
Present.
Sarah Elburn.
Present.
Tricia Dorsey.
Present.
Rachel Doyle.
Present.
Jamal Jongo. Irma Cattrall.
Present.
Janie Payne.
Present.
Brittany Patrick. Teresa Smith.
Present.
Sharice Vickery. And Erica Wingate. We have quorum.
With the quorum present, the disability issue advisory board meeting will come to order. Adoption adoption of the meeting agenda, if there are no objections, the committee shall doubt February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting agenda. There now, there being no objections to February eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, meeting agenda is adopted. Approval of the committee meeting meeting minutes, if there are no corrections, the committee shall approve January ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting and January twenty-first, twenty-five, two thousand twenty-five meeting minutes as distributed. Have everyone had a chance to review the minutes? Vice Chairperson, can you go, um? Are there any corrections? There being no corrections to January ninth and January twenty-first meeting minutes are, do anyone? My apologies. Are then, are there any objections to the minutes from January ninth, two thousand twenty-five meeting and January twenty-first, two thousand twenty-five meeting? There being no corrections, January ninth and January twenty-first meeting minutes are approved. Any discussions? From the previous meeting? Vice Chair, do you have anything to add to that?
Um, there were a couple of items that was from the previous meeting, but um, it's tied into agenda item two point three, so we can hold it until we get there.
Okay. Um, election for recording secretary. The chair now recognize any candidates for the recording secretary position? Anyone on the committee like to be the recording secretary position, would like to be a nominee for the secretary position, recording secretary position? No nominees? Vice Chair, do you have any suggestions for that position? No one wants to, actually, no one really wants to do that position.
Chair Blackwell, if I may just kind of, I'm sorry, if I could just kind of interject, we may have to bring this item back at the next meeting, but I'll, um, I'm going to get some, I'm going to consult with my colleagues about this, this item to see if it needs to be brought back in another meeting. Because from my understanding, there is supposed to be a recording secretary for this advisory board. So if no one is nominating someone or self-nominating, we may have, you may have to bring this item back for the next meeting.
Okay.
But I'll confirm that as a follow-up for you guys.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm. Um, remove any, uh, Madam Vice Chair, do you have anything to add to that? Any questions?
And no. We're good.
Okay. Are we going to move on to two point three board policy seventeen hundred? Any discussion? I know it was brought up that we need some clarification on board policy seventeen hundred.
So, um, I, I requested for Dr. Moss to attend this meeting this tonight because he is the chair of the Policy and Governance Committee. Uh, at, at our last meeting, um, and actually, and, and, and a number of previous meetings, um, there's been some questions around what exactly is this group governed to do? Um, we know what's outlined in policy seventeen hundred. Uh, we also know what's not outlined. And in me doing follow-up, what I understand, this group is to only cover items related to ADA. Anything else being referred to CCAC. So Dr. Moss, if you are still here, be a great opportunity for you to chime in and help this group to understand um, the thought process about policy seventeen hundred, what exactly the expectations are. Um, and then we may have some questions as follow-up.
Yeah, I don't know how well you all can hear me. I may be going in and out, but I do want to say, uh, board policy seventeen hundred came about in about twenty fifteen. Um, and this policy was designed really to hold the district accountable around accessibility. And this was to ensure that when we build new buildings and those things, that this body actually make sure we are meeting ADA requirements. And so seventeen hundred spells out three particular conditions for you all. The final conditions outside of the one that I've laid out is around employment and making sure folks who are not able individuals also have access to job opportunities in the district. That's the scope of this. The state also has CCAC, um, which is actually not Prince George's County School District policy. It's actually state mandated policy that covers other areas. Um, but I believe that is the scope of this group, um, is around recommendations. I do know that as you all have perused those issues, you have run into other issues, uh, and you all are trying to find the most appropriate place to situate those concerns. Um, so Ms. Teresa, would you like for me to say more? Um, I want to make sure I answer whatever questions you all have too. Um, I do know you all have a yearly report and I told Ms. Teresa, you know, I think the board, we revisit policies every year. Um, if you all feel like something is missing, that policy has not been revised in quite some time, so we can look at it. So wouldn't, when you make your recommendations this year, um, if I were you all, I would include some recommendations to the Policy and Governance Committee around what can strengthen this particular board policy without changing its original authorial intent. Um, I think we're, we're happy to look at those as we review policy.
Okay. So, oh, I'm sorry, Chair Blackwell, may I have the floor?
Yes, you may.
Okay. So Dr. Moss, just as, as some follow-up, um, for the, for DAB, um, because this policy is not in rotation this year, we can do our recommendations report, but I, I think I have a concern about the length of time that if we do make a recommendation, um, how long it may take for that recommendation to actually be implemented if it was to go forward. Um.
Do you mind if I address that for you?
Sure.
Um, if it's substantive, um, the PNG Chair and the administration can bring the policy up for review sooner than that. Uh, if it's not substantive, we can look at it to review in the fall. Um, so depending on the nature of it, we can revisit. So depending on what your recommendations are, we do have a little bit of a latitude to, to revisit it. So long as it stays within the intent of the existing policy. So if your recommendations are about, you know, changing the complete scope of the policy, um, you know, that will, um, we'd have to really take that under advisement, um, but we still have a first read process, second read, public comment, all of that. So it will take some time whenever we do it, as you know. But I did want to tell you, depending on what your recommendations are, we do have a bit of latitude, um, to revisit the policy.
Okay, okay. Thank you for that clarity. Now, one specific question that I do have is, and I don't know if this question is for you or not, Dr. Moss, but because some of the concerns that we may have may be out of scope of the policy, would a special committee be able to be created to address those items?
Um, I think that's a really great question. Um, my first concern would be, is it something that does not fall within the purview of CCAC? Um, because they do have a pretty expansive purview. Um, and I know you and I talked about five oh four, and I do think we need to have a conversation about five oh four. Um, but we, we've got an administrative procedure around it, um, and it doesn't sit in the same shop of, of a future Dr. Bowman, who is on the call, I believe she's on the call, but, um, if it's something like revisiting five oh four, I think we, and what accountability is in place that I think, one, we would need to talk to the administration and look at the administrative procedure. And C, um, if there's opportunity for a little bit more governance in that, you know, of course, the board doesn't deal with admin procedures, that's going to be the administration. So, you know, if it's something about five oh four, I think a logical next step is to talk to Dr. Davis and team and say, we don't see this in the administrative procedure. We'd like to see this to have a little bit more accountability. Um, so that, that would be my recommendation. If, if you've got an issue that's not covered in any policy, let's figure out who has jurisdiction over it and try to work from that place. If it's five oh four, it's going to be Dr. Davis. Of course, if it's special education, that's going to be Dr. White, Dr. Bowman, um, who can support our work there. Uh, but did I answer your question, Ms. Teresa?
Yeah, yes, you have, and I will yield the floor now in case others have questions. Thank you.
And I just want to say if you, if I know your five oh four concern, I've raised it for you, and I think the next, the next good, next step is for us to talk to Dr. Davis around five oh four, if you're okay with that.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I agree with that.
Okay, well, I'm late going into the forum that I'm one of the sponsors for, so, um, I, I, I'm happy to entertain more questions. I can come back to the next meeting. Um, but I believe a good next step for us is to talk to Dr. Davis about five oh four, and then I'll wait on your other recommendations around this current policy, if that works for you all.
Yes, that does work for the committee.
Yeah, and y'all got Cindy here and y'all got Dr. Bowman. They know way more than me, so, uh, if I miss something, uh, y'all talk to them.
Thank you.
All right.
Mm-hmm. Well, if I, if there are no other questions, I know Dr. Moss is leaving, uh, may I state one other thing for this group?
Uh, yes, um, you may go ahead.
Okay, so in our last meeting, and I'm just, I'm, I'm speaking from the heart here, and then just my understanding of how policies are supposed to work, in the last meeting, I heard where CCAC is willing to, um, partner with DAB. Um, if there are concerns that, you know, that need to be addressed, and I think that that's a great opportunity for us. However, we know what CCAC's mandate is. You guys heard Dr. Moss state that I brought up section five oh four to him. That's a gap. Um, and it's a gap with policy, um, seventeen hundred, and to just defer something to CCAC, that's concerning to me. So I just, I just want to state that, that we have to look at this holistically. Um, if we really want to, you know, make the appropriate changes that need to be done. So a section five oh four and even IDEA, regardless of CCAC being in place. So I just, I just wanted to state that here.
Okay, I've got the, um, committee like to recognize Ms. Bain. You came on, would you like to speak? Would anyone like, any committee like to address what Ms. Hope was speaking of? Ms. Bowman?
No, I don't have any opinions or thoughts. Yep.
All right. Uh-huh. Thank you. Um, Ms. Bain, I saw you, um, before. Would you like to speak?
Oh, no, thank you for asking.
Okay, anyone else like to address what Ms. Hope was speaking of? Or anything that Mr., um, Dr. Moss was, um, speak, speaking about? Okay, we're going to two point four.
Before we move on, I'm sorry, Chair Blackwell, so there was another follow-up with this item, um, um, oh shucks, I think it was Ms. Doyle, um, but the question was who, which members were assigned to which subcommittees? Um, that, that we created. So, um, those are inside of the January ninth meeting minutes. Um, so you guys can refer to that document. Um, there's only one committee that I think I would be concerned about as far as a quorum possibly being, um, established, and I'm sorry, I can't remember which one it was. Um, but there are six, is six members assigned to it. So if a DAB member wanted to just jump into that meeting, you know, whenever it's being held one time, if, if the quorum gets to seven, we have to turn that into a public session. So I just wanted the, the board to be mindful of that.
Okay.
And that's.
Okay, um, we can come back to that. Let me, that was going over, are you speaking on January twenty-first meeting? Or January ninth meeting for the committees?
Committees were identified in January ninth meeting.
Okay, give me.
But the question came up in the January twenty-first meeting as a follow-up item.
Okay, we'll follow up that, um, for today, um. Give me one second. Um, we'll double back to that. Let's, um, keep moving, and we'll come back to that. Um, special education report, um, Chair recognize Trinell Bowman?
Ms. Blackwell?
Yes.
I'm sorry, this is Rachel Doyle. I have my hand raised.
Oh, yeah, I, I, I'm just seeing it. So my apologies. You may.
No worries. Um, it looks like the staffing one is the one that had, that, um, had six, but, um, Ms. Dawson Williams, I believe, has resigned, so should be okay with five.
Okay. And that was with the staffing, I believe I'm on that committee.
Implementing hiring, yeah.
Yes, I'm on that committee as well.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you for clarification, Ms. Doyle. Um, special education report, Ms. Trinell Bowman?
And which special I report?
Chair Blackwell, I'm sorry, if I could just interject, I believe the Vice Chair, um, requested to be recognized.
Yeah, if I may, Chair Blackwell, just to bring some clarity, this wasn't an item. Two point five special education report is an item for Ms. Ms. Bowman. Um, we had received an email, um, basically alerting DAB that there was a special education report provided to the Board of Education. And the member who, who, um, brought that to our attention just wanted the, the group to be aware of it, and there's a lot of data that's inside of that report if this team would like to take a look at it. So that's the only reason why this is an agenda item. So nothing for Ms. Bowman to react to.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, because it was on the agenda. That's why I was addressing it. Um, so anyone have anything to add to that, Ms. What Ms. Hope was speaking of?
Uh, Chair, Trinell Bowman has her hand raised.
Okay, I couldn't see it. Go ahead. I'm, I'm not on my computer. I'm using my phone this evening. Ms. Bowman?
That's okay. So, um, thank you for that clarity, um, Vice Chair. Uh, we did provide the Board of Ed Audit Committee a copy of the Part C and Part D, the latest general supervision monitoring report from the Maryland State Department of Education, which is, I believe, the report she's, um, that was being referenced. And so I can send those to the board office to disseminate to DIAB, but they were on their, they are on board docs from the February fourth, uh, Prince George's County Board of Education Audit Meeting. And slide eleven actually has the two reports that were linked in. Um, during that meeting, we were also joined by the Maryland State Department of Education, um, Assistant State Superintendent Dr. Hickman, along with two colleagues from his office to go over how the Maryland State Department of Education monitors, uh, us as a district. I just wanted to put that on for the record.
Okay, thank you.
Chair Blackwell, uh, members Rachel Doyle and Sarah Elburn both have their hands raised.
Um, Ms. Doyle?
Hi, sorry, two things now. Ms. Bowman, what, um, what date was that meeting, that board meeting?
It was a, the Board of Education Audit Subcommittee, and that was on February the fourth.
Um, I'm not seeing it on board docs. Maybe it's just not up yet.
Okay, I'm going to yield to our board office.
Okay.
The agenda should, the presentation itself should be up there. Um, and I can go out there and search it, but it should be the February fourth Special Education Audit Committee meeting. Are you seeing the meeting date at all?
I'm seeing January twenty-fifth, then February sixth.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, I'm not sure if that's something you can look into. Because I know it was publicly posted.
Which one, this was from the?
This would have been the February fourth Board of Education Audit Committee meeting.
Okay. And this was a report?
It was a pre, a PowerPoint presentation that was presented, and within the PowerPoint on slide eleven and linked the actual, um, Envisant Tullers Part C Monitoring Report and Part B, which is our IEP ages three through twenty-one monitoring report.
Okay, um, I could certainly look into that and give you all follow-up.
So it is on there.
Oh, thank you.
To the Board Audit Committee. So in the top right-hand corner of board docs, there should be a little, um, icon like a library.
Hmm.
If you click on that icon and you go to Board Audit Committee, it should be the first meeting you see, February fourth.
Thank you so much. I'm still a board docs rookie. Um, second question, and again, this might be aimed at you, Ms. Bowman, is that the same thing as the special education for Prince George's comprehensive monitoring report?
Yes.
Okay.
But there's two. So there's a part, just to just make a distinction, there's a Part C report, which is the Envisant Tullers birth to three, and then there's a Part B report, which is for students who have IEPs ages three to twenty-one, just to make that distinction. But they both have the same title, it's just one will say Part C and one will say Part B.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Bain?
Hi there. Um, if I can just get, uh, some clarity, uh, from Chair Blackwell or Vice Chair Smith on the subcommittees. Uh, so I'm looking at the January ninth, um, meeting minutes, and there were three, right? So, and I was in the board policy seventeen hundred one, which, if I'm recalling correctly, was to kind of understand the genesis of the policy and determine its, um, next steps or whatever it may be. It sounds like based on discussions today, the policy is what it is. Um, so that's, do we need to reconfigure this subcommittee? Um, also, just more mechanically in this, you know, you all are more experienced with these sort of convenings, but when are these subcommittees meeting? How does that happen? When does that happen? Just want to make sure I'm ready. Thank you.
Vice Chair, would you like to, um, give, um, give clarification on that, please? Ms. Hope? Ms. Smith? Ms. Johnson?
Ms. Johnson, my phone kicked me out of the meeting, so.
The Vice Chair is back.
Okay. Vice Chair, would you like to give Ms. Bain some clarification on when we should meet with the subcommittees? When would the subcommittee start, start meeting?
Um, Chair, if I can, um, just interject, um, it looks like, uh, the Vice Chair maybe having some technical issues. Yeah, so, um, from my understanding, as long as there isn't a quorum, which would be for this group seven, it should be okay for y'all to have discussions, um.
Okay.
Yeah, as long as it's not, because as, uh, the Vice Chair mentioned earlier, when you have, um, that minimum number of seven, then we would have to, the meeting would have to be open to the public.
Okay.
Per policy, yes.
Okay, so if it's less than seven, we could still have a meeting, and that'd be open to public?
Yes.
Okay, um, do we have to put that on the calendar or we discuss within the committees where we want to meet?
Um, I don't believe, and Cindy, if you could correct me if I'm wrong, I don't believe this has to go, um, on a calendar. They can have their, I guess, um, briefings behind the scenes.
So, a question, are the subcommittees part of the board? Like, is the board initiating the subcommittees or the, the DAB committee is initiating the subcommittees for the committee? I don't know if you understand what I'm saying.
Okay, did DAB is, uh, organizing the subcommittees to be able to address the issues that we want to bring to the board?
So that could be discussed within the committee.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. But if it's, if it's a board-initiated subcommittee, then that would come from the board. I would do the calendar and every other part that comes with it. But if it's the committee having their own subcommittees, then that is the committee. The responsibility defaults on the committee and not the board office.
Okay. So, um, so to organize that, do we have to have, um, this is a question for Ms. Johnson, do we have, have we, do we have the email addresses? For the, do they have to have a PG CPS email address to be able to email each other regarding the meetings or their private emails?
Uh, no, you can use, um, I believe, like, whatever email you have. Now, I can, um, what I'll do is I could provide a list of everyone's email so that way you can go through and see who's on your committee and then, um, coordinate when you all would meet to discuss, uh, your sections, um, that you've been assigned to.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Mm-hmm.
And I believe, uh, Ms. Bowman has her hand up. And Ms. Payne as well.
Just had a question. I didn't know if we should, um, select a lead for each of the subcommittees, just in terms of who's organ, logistic-wise, who would organize the meetings for each of the subcommittees, if we needed to do that tonight?
We can do that tonight, um.
That was just a recommendation, so we.
Yes, because then we can start moving forward because we need to get the committees up and running right now. And address the issues that we're trying to address, to bring, bring those ideas to the board, um. Ms. Johnson, do you have a list of the, um, people who is on each committee?
Yes, that information is also in the, I believe it's the January ninth meeting minutes that's posted on board docs. Um, but I can just send a breakout to everyone, so you don't have to go, uh, sifting through board docs.
I'm running through my phone, I left my computer.
Actually, I did send you all, um, in an email, I guess, was it two days ago? The meeting minutes from January ninth and the twenty-first, so if you open up the January ninth meeting minutes document, scroll to the bottom, I believe it's the, hmm, what sort of, towards the end of the, uh, the agenda, you'll see, um, well, by last name, it's broken out. towards the end of the, uh, the agenda, you'll see, um, well, by last name, it's broken out. But I can provide a more, um, kind of a comprehensive list that has, uh, everyone's, um, well, I'll attach everyone's email address to it as well.
Just a quick update for the committee as a whole. So after the subcommittee makes any decision, it has to come back to the DIAB committee for a vote before it comes to the board.
Yeah.
Okay, and then the board liaison will take it to the board members.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. Give me one second. And thank you, Ms. Bowman, for suggesting that each committee should have a lead person. That'd be the person to organize the day that they're gonna meet and what they're gonna be discussing.
Uh, Chair Blackwell, um, Janie Payne has her hand raised.
Ms. Payne. Uh, my apologies.
Oh, uh, no worries. I, I wanted to be clear on the number of seven with the committee. Those seven would be members of the DIAB, because we may also have guests and so forth. So when we talk about the seven, who are we talking about? Just for clarity.
Um, Chair, I can clarify that if, if that's possible. So, um, you all are voting members, so really the quorum, excuse me, the, the quorum number includes voting members, which you all are. So if there's any guests, they're not a part of that quorum. So let's say if it's six you all, excuse me, and then you have a guest, they're not a part of that quorum.
Ms. Payne, did I answer your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you so much.
Let me check. Um. We can address, um, Ms. Johnson, do you wanna send that out to us today?
Um, it will be sent out as a follow-up item to you all.
Thank you. Um. Two, I'd like to address 2.5, uh, Explore Ways to Advise, any discussion, recognize committee members? Um, I do, I would like to address, um, Ms. Johnson.
I'm sorry, Chair Blackwell, this is Teresa Smith.
Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Um, just, um, this is a quick call. Ms. Johnson, I'm on another device, because I am having some technical issues. Could you promote me to a panelist from my other name? And then Chair Blackwell, for this agenda item, this was one that was submitted by Ms. Patrick. She actually wanted the board to have a more coordinated, coordinated way of engaging, um, with stakeholders. And I realize she is not here this evening, so I'm not sure if we want to move forward with this discussion item, or if we want to table it.
Um, by Ms. Patrick not being here, I'd like to table it, so she could be able to, um, convey what she wants to explain about that.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, could we go back to the previous agenda item? Um, I know Ms. Bowman had made a recommendation possibly of selecting, um, leads for the subcommittees. I don't know if I missed it, but are we gonna move forward with trying to get that established? I know that, um, the board members here have been, um, anxious is the word that's coming to my head, but that's not really how I wanna describe it, but people wanna get to work. So we know what the subcommittees are, we know who are a part of them. So I think moving forward with this recommendation would be the, the best path forward, so that, um, folks can start meeting. And of course, we need, we would need a lead.
Okay. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Johnson's gonna send out a list of everyone's email and the people that's assigned to the committees.
The question is, before we leave this evening, can we identify who would like to be a lead of the subcommittees, each subcommittee?
We could do that. We can actually do that right now. Do you have a copy of the, um, uh, list of the committees? We only had three. Am I correct?
Yeah, so for Board Policy 1700, the members are Patrick, Smith, Byrne, Vickery, and Wingate Robinson.
Okay, Ms. Patrick and Ms. Vickery are not here. Is Ms., is Ms. Vickery, um, let me see. No, she's not here. Ms. Vickery and Ms. Patrick are not here. So, who else is on that committee? Ms. Ms. Bain, I'm sorry.
Yes, I, I'm here. However, Ms. Patrick, I would like to at least give her the opportunity to be the lead. Uh, she was the most vocal on, and seemed to have the kind of most expertise on this subject. Um, so, we also don't really have that many board members, uh, or nominated members on this, at this meeting. Um, so I'm, I'm a bit hesitant to draw leads right now, but if you need someone to pencil in, you can pencil me in, but I would like to defer to Ms. Patrick on this.
Okay, um, Vice Chair, the, um, give, uh, can you give a little advice on, should we just appoint Ms. Patrick to it, even though she's not here?
I, I'm hesitant to appoint, um, but I guess the question probably is, is for the folks that are here this evening, are you guys okay with us moving forward, trying to identify a chair for the subcommittee? I guess that's the first question.
Yes, I would.
Maybe that's not a question, maybe it's a motion, so that we can try to see if we can get a vote. I move that we establish subcommittee leads for Board Policy 1700, new constru-, new school construction, accessibility of buildings and facilities, and employment and hiring.
Second.
Okay, so I'm sorry to interrupt, um, Vice Chair, this is gonna be a roll call vote. Um, so I'll have to take the roll call for that. Um, did you, I'm sorry, did you finish your motion?
I did. Okay, all right.
Can, can she repeat that, please? I'm on my phone and it kinda went out. Sorry.
Sure. Motion is that I move that we establish subgroup leads for Board Policy 1700, new school construction, accessibility of buildings and facilities, and employment and hiring.
Second.
Um, okay, um, I think Chair, if you would tell me to call the roll.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Um, Ms. Johnson, can you call the roll, please, for vote?
Ms. Amaya? And you could say either, um, aye or, or no.
Ms. Amaya?
Okay, I think she's absent. Um, Ms. Blackwell?
Aye.
Ms. Bowman?
Aye.
Ms. Byrne?
Aye.
Ms. Dorsey?
Aye.
Ms. Doyle?
Aye.
Ms. Katrelle?
Aye.
Ms. Patrick? Ms. Payne?
Aye.
Ms. Smith?
Aye.
Ms. Vickery? And Mrs. Wingate Robinson? Um, the motion passes.
Give me one second, please.
Sure.
Vice Chair, can you cover, um, for me for a few minutes, please?
Sure. So I guess at this moment, um, is there, in the absence of Ms. Patrick and Ms. Vickery, is there any other member for Board Policy 1700 that would like to be Chair? Or lead, subgroup lead? Hearing none. For new school construction, accessibility of buildings and facilities, that includes Vickery, Bowman, Smith, and Blackwell. Is there anyone who would like to be the subgroup lead? Hearing none. And then the next subcommittee is employment and hiring?
Uh, Ms., uh, Ms., uh, Smith, Ms. Bowman has her hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, I might need to pull my thing up. Uh, Ms. Bowman, you have the floor?
Yes, I was saying, I, I can serve as the lead for the Accessibility and New Construction Subcommittee.
Great, thank you so much. And then the next subcommittee is Employment and Hiring. It's Blackwell, Payne, Patrick, Doyle, Wingate Robinson. Oh, and that's it. Would someone like to be the subcommittee chair or lead?
I'm willing to be the, um, subcommittee lead on that one. This is Payne.
Great, thank you, Ms. Payne. So, um, just to repeat for the record, we do not have a Chair for Board Policy 1700. The Chair for New School Construction Accessibility of Buildings and Facilities is Ms. Bowman. And then for Employment and Hiring, it is Ms. Payne. Thank you, guys. Uh, Ms. Blackwell, are you back? All right, guys.
Vice Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. Uh, Ms. Tricia Dorsey has her hand raised.
Oh. Ms., Ms. Dorsey, you have the floor?
I'm sorry, I'm, this is like my second meeting, and I realized I am not listed on any of the subcommittee, because I wasn't, this is like, this is my second meeting. Is there a way for me to still be added to one, or?
Absolutely. Um, just based on the titles, is there one that is of interest to you?
The hiring one, if you don't mind.
Okay, sure thing.
Thank you so much.
All right, I don't see any other questions or any other hands. Ms. Blackwell, are you back?
Yes, I'm back.
Okay. So that covers, um, I think we were getting ready to move to item 2.4, but under 2.3, we have identified our subcommittee chairs or leads, with the exception of Board Policy 1700.
Okay, okay. Um, we covered 2.4. Um, it was no report. Um, Ms. Bowman gave information for February 4th and February 6th, uh, Special Education Audit and Sub, um, Sub Committee, and it's listed on board docs. Um, 2.5, 2.5 was Explore Ways to Advise.
That's the one we actually tabled.
Yes, okay, could we table that? Okay, thank you. So now we are at 2.6, Update Membership. Any discussion?
Um, so Chair Blackwell and maybe, um, Ms. Johnson. We don't have a board member liaison here tonight, so I don't know how this might can get addressed tonight, but we just needed an update on where we are with membership. It's unclear to me as to whether or not, um, the vacancies that we have will just be appointed. I apologize for my background noise. Um, are we gonna have appointments? Or i- is, um, are they gonna launch the membership application again? I guess I just need to know what is happening as it relates to our vacancies.
Uh, sure, so this will be a follow-up question, which I have noted. Um, I will, um, be in contact with Board Member Brown, uh, to see how, uh, what the plans are to address the vacancies that are within the advisory board, and we can follow up with you once we, uh, I get an answer. On how to proceed, you're welcome.
Do any of the committees have any, committee members have any thing they would like to mention or to bring up?
I have a question.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. By.
Um, there was a couple of meetings back, I forget, I forget which member raised it. Uh, but to my knowledge, it's an open item on, uh, the board doing some sort of announcement or introduction of the DIAB members, um, to school admin and local groups, uh, similar to what they've done in the past for an org whose name, I'm, it be, I don't know, CCAC or whomever, but folks who do must know what I'm talking about. Uh, to my knowledge, that's open, and to my knowledge, this is somewhat of a hindrance in DIAB members being able to get out and engage with the community, uh, as is what I understand to be some of our purpose. Um, I believe it's been open since December. Uh, so who, who takes the lead on that, and is that? Maybe it's not necessary, I don't know, but it's my understanding that we are kind of waiting for that. So I would just appreciate an update.
Ms. Johnson, did we get an update in that question?
Um, if you're referring to what I believe you're referring to, from my understanding, I believe it was suggested that, um, the schools, I, I believe, within your district, to see if they have like a PTA, PTA or a PTO, they may be the best ones to go through as far as introducing, um, yourself, um, since they work within the school. Um, that was, I believe, one suggestion, um, that came up, and I believe perhaps maybe was my director may have, uh, suggested that could be one method of reaching out. Um, as far as.
I thought we were, I'm, I'm sorry, I thought we were waiting on something like specifically from, uh, the board itself, like something formal on this. Uh, I can certainly, I'm open to, I talk to any and everybody, that's fine. I was under the impression that we were on hold from doing that until there was a formal announcement. And that's been, uh, yeah, so.
So, let me, um, look into it. Um, I'll follow up and I can work with Robin, um, the Board Member Brown, um, just to see what would be the most appropriate way to, um, to send out, um, communication about DIAB being reestablished and is the best method for you all to perhaps interact with the PTA or PTO, if that school has one? And if they don't, who in, within the school would be the, the, the best point of contact? But I do know it was mentioned that, um, and I guess this is more so individually for you all, would be the, a PTO or a PTA, um, that's within the school, but of course, not all schools maybe have, have those organizations. So then it would be a matter of finding out who would be, um, the best point of contact. So, um, we could certainly do, um, another follow-up on that item. Um, I'm, I'm gonna note that in my notes.
Just a good question, I'm sorry. Is there asked to find out how communications to fill the vacant post is, could be distributed on? Is that the ask?
If I may, um, Chair Blackwell, may I be acknowledged real quick? Um, so Ms. Byrne is correct, this was a follow-up item, and what was stated to us was that Mr. Fitzpatrick was going to coordinate with administration about the reactivation of DIAB. There was some discussion about engagement at the lower level, and that ties into the agenda item about this whole coordinated effort. So we've tabled that agenda item, but at the Board Office level, Mr. Fitzpatrick was going to be coordinating with administration to do a formal reintroduction, so that that communication could come from the top. And then we, as a board here, would discuss what our coordinated efforts would be before we start engagement. And then we, as a board here, would discuss what our coordinated efforts would be before we start engagement.
Ms. Biden, did I answer your question?
Thank you, so we're waiting on follow-up from Mr. Fitzpatrick, at least to get things rolling. And that's as of our last meeting, or was it raised in December?
It was from the January ninth meeting. So I'm not sure if that communication has happened, so maybe, Ms. Allen, that's the question. Has the board office and administration sent any formal communication out about the reactivation of D I A B?
Was that enough?
Oh, so Vice Chair, what I can do is, I'll consult with Mr. Fitzpatrick and see about where we are with that, if he had received any follow-up, and we can certainly get in contact with the appropriate administrative personnel to see how we can get communication sent out to the schools that the app is, has been reactivated. And then from there, we can go with the, the next steps in communicating you all's activity.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Ms. Johnson? Ms. Biden, did it give you clarification to your, to your question?
Yes, thank you.
Chair, Rachel Doyle has her hand raised.
Ms. Doyle? Doyle?
Hi, thanks. I know we had also talked about D I A B having an email address, I do have some documents that I think are worthy of sharing with the class, so to speak. But I've been waiting to hear about an email address, or how I should go about distributing that to everybody. Thanks.
Ms. Johnson?
Yeah, I can provide, so unfortunately, so the email was set up, but unfortunately, it wasn't set up correctly as far as the name, and so I've been trying to work with email support services to get them to correct the name. And I'm gonna ping them tomorrow, because I haven't received any further communication from them about fixing how, the name of that email. So hopefully I can get a response tomorrow from them to see where they are in that, but the email itself, the inbox had been created, but they didn't have to correct. The name wasn't set up correctly, so I had to get them to, I asked them if they could fix that, and I haven't heard back from them yet.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything for the committee this evening? We can move on to three point oh, if there's no other concerns right now for the committee. Anyone else like to bring anything up? If all in favor, we can adjourn the meeting for this evening. The chair informs the public that the next virtual disability issue advisory board meeting will be March eighteenth. Please continue to check your Pritchard County Board of Education website for meetings, information, and updates. Thank you for all your great discussions and attendance. To our viewers, thank you for watching. There being no further business at this time, the time now is at seven oh two. And the February eighteenth disability issue advisory board meeting is adjourned.